Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 2019 meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees. Thank you all for being here. Our first order of business is a call to order and roll call. Let the record show that we have a quorum of trustees present, and we'll move to the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir trustees, looks like we have a bunch of little sharks with us today. They're aggressive, too.
Couple of them are pretty mean at this time.
Absolutely. We have Ms. Kopeck, Ms. Brooks from Harmony Elementary School, and they're gonna let us know what the sharks are here for.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and the East Central School Board. We are honored to be here representing Harmony Elementary today, and we have Mrs. Brooks, our fine arts teacher, and some of our kinder sharks, our kinder friends down here with us this evening, who will be saying the pledge. They will also be showcasing part of their kinder performance that they're gonna be doing next week. Please stand and bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing and guiding our school district this year. We pray that you will continue to give strength to our school board, staff, and teachers. We thank all of them for their hard work, dedication, and love for us this year. Please bless them and their families, and continue to lead our district. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is stand, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you, students. Good evening, school board. This evening, some of our Harmony's outstanding kindergarteners will be performing a part of their kinder showcase. Let me list the students who are joining us this evening. We have Kayden Hubbell, Jonah Maggot, Ryland Shipman, Caleb Crusis, Liliana Espinoza, Madeline Tomelson, Mackenzie Dove, Javin Estrada, and Emily Gomez Mahia, and Peyton Hatfield. Please enjoy. Thank you, students, for that special performance. You guys did a great job. We also wanna say thank you to all the parents of these students. So, parents, if you are here, can you please stand so we can give you a round of applause for your amazing children you share with us every day? We appreciate you having us all here this evening, and we have a little token of thanks. We have a little school board shark doo-doo-doo-doo-doo snack bag. So, they'll go ahead and bring them up there, and we hope you enjoy. Thank you very much.
I think Mr. Mulkey was trying to get an extra bag.
Now, that was just fun. Thank you very much for opening our meeting this evening. It's great to see you guys happy and enjoying school and learning things every day. And now I know a lot more about sharks, and it seems like they're pretty friendly. So, we'll get there. We're gonna have some awards right now. If y'all would bear with us, as soon as we get through with that, we'll take a short break and let everybody go home to do homework or grade homework, and we'll finish our meeting after that. But without further ado, Mr. Toscano, awards and recognitions, please, sir.
Yes, trustees, among the nearly fifteen, sixteen hundred employees, we have three of our finest among us this evening that we'd like to recognize for some of their recognitions that they received this year at the state and local level. And so, Ms. Coles?
Good evening, President Bryant, Mr. Toscano, board members. We are super excited tonight to recognize three of our outstanding employees for awards that they received from outside of our borders, outside the East Central borders. First, I would like to have up Ms. Brenda Dotson from Sinclair. Ms. Dotson, won third place for Elementary Teacher of the Year from the Alamo Area Alliance of Black School Educators. So, congratulations, Ms. Dotson. Next, I would like to call up Gabriel Tahanar from East Central High School, who was the San Antonio Area Association for Bilingual Education. He was the ESL Teacher of the Year. And then we are also very fortunate to have the Texas, which is the Texas Elementary Principals Association, Region Twenty Assistant Principal of the Year in our district at Highland Forest, and that's Ms. Carrie Helmke. Will the families, I know that we've got some family members in the audience of those outstanding educators. If you are a family member of one of the educators we recognize tonight, will you please stand up and also be recognized? Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your wives with us. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for the work that you do for our students and for those spouses, for the time that you share your spouse with us. We know that it's a lot of work and a lot of effort, but the results are absolutely amazing. And here's the basis of that right there, the foundation. So, it's what we're all about here. Thank you very much. We're going to take a short recess so that those of you who need to go do homework or grade homework can scoot on out of here. And we'll be back at ten minutes to seven to continue our meeting. Thank you. All right. We'll reconvene, and our next agenda item is item four, public comments. We have one individual who signed up to speak, Jennifer Prado. Ms. Prado, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay.
Your agenda, your item is not on our agenda, so there'll be no discussion with the board except for any statements of fact or clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and the rest of the board. Just a little background, my name is Jennifer Prado. My family has been in the district with East Central for over sixty years now, since the nineteen forties is when we first moved out here. So, several generations have come through the hallways of East Central. My son is a sophomore. He'll be the next one to graduate, and his sibling and cousins will be thereafter. I'm here tonight in regards to a mysterious matter that had occurred regarding one of our coaches. It was brought to our attention after a game one day that a profane word was used, and then the next week, coach was gone. And we were just wondering what had happened. I know we, a lot of parents, students, players, had reached out to the principal, athletic director, and superintendent for answers. We still haven't received a clear answer as to why he was removed for three weeks. However, this past Tuesday, he was reinstated. That was a very emotional return for the boys and the coaches. I don't know if anyone has any players on the team, but they were all in tears. So, we're glad that he's back, but we want to focus on why he was gone. There's no clear answers, and that's what we were hoping to ask the board, was to look into the matter and see if all the policies and procedures were followed as far as discipline for the profane language. As many of us know, today in society, profanity is used very often, and it's almost to the point where the profane language has no meaning anymore. Sorry. In addition, on April second, our director was in the dugout and had made a comment using a profane word as well. So, we're wanting to get more clarification on transparency and fairness across the board. You know, if the coach was removed from his position for three weeks, you know, we're gonna proceed forward with the other complaint and see if everything jives. I just wanted to share that our baseball program has done tremendously well since this coach's tenure started three years ago. Not only wins and rankings, but also with the morale of the program itself. These boys and players came to the board meeting last week to stand in solidarity for their coach. They all were wearing the same shirt that I'm wearing today because they really wanted answers and they really missed him. They believe in him, they love his leadership. He's instilled his motto, which is good people first, awesome baseball players second. That is something that we want instilled in all our children, whether it's in the classroom, or on the field, on the court, on the track. We're here to make good people of all these children, followed by their talents being exacerbated second. In showing their solidarity, they had to, of course, remain silent because it was a special meeting and not a public meeting, so they were not able to speak. But their mere presence, they felt was enough to show that they stood in affirmance with their coach and that, you know, they wanted him back. Each week, they have Words of the Week, and I don't know if any of you received those or see them on Twitter, but here lately, it's been persevere, unrelenting, humble. These reflections and these Words of the Week, every day, they make a post, and they give a statement and some type of reflection. And I have to say that these Words of the Week have also inspired me, which is why I'm here, trying to shed light on the situation and help these boys with their fight. We decided, you know, they started their own social media hashtag PFJKM, and every day that they had a game, they were posting, "We're doing this for you, we're playing for you, where did you go, we want you back." So, as parents started talking and decided, you know what? We need to show our boys to be leaders. We tell them to be leaders, but we need to show them. We need to be their example. So, again, I'm just here today to bring focus on the person or persons who were in charge of handing out the disciplinary action and the absence of the coach, and to determine if the appropriate policies and processes were followed. It seems to us that with the mystery of it all, that channels were not followed, and perhaps someone jumped the gun, or may even have pulled some strings. And that type of action is unacceptable in our community. We need to hold everybody responsible for their actions, from students, to parents, to teachers, to administrative directors, to superintendents, to board members.
Ms. Prado, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. Your five minutes are done. So, please, finish up.
Okay, thank you. So, at the end of the day, we just wanna know what happened and get some clarification, and make sure everything is above board and being transparent. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Five, Superintendent's Reports, Personnel Report.
Trustees, on page nine, your electronic packet, you'll see this month's report. While there may not be much activity there in the report this month, you'll see our recommendations for multi-year contracts, as well as one-year contracts, as well as the assignments for all of those employees, to include the location which they're assigned, and this would all be for the year nineteen twenty. So, if you look through that and have any questions or would like additional information, certainly reach out to me, and we'll be sure to get you that information.
All right, thank you. Item B, Health Services Department Update.
This time, I'd like to call Ms. Jaylen up to the podium. You can come on up. She's gonna give us our annual, our update at this point of our Health Service Department's goals, as well as the progress they've made this year and the work that they're focusing on going forward, so.
Do you have the slides available that I provided?
They do, they have them in their packet, trustees. They begin on page twenty-five, you can follow along.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight our department. The Health Services Department will support the profile of the EC graduates, specifically lifelong learners, by performing individual teaching learning moments with students visiting the clinic. We felt like it was necessary to continue this goal that we established last year because we feel like we need to engage those students, even when they're with us in the clinic and out of class. So, we wanted to document at least forty percent of teaching moments with all of our clinic visits. The next slide shows that we've charted over seventy-nine thousand encounters with students this year at campuses. And of those encounters, we have charted forty-nine point three percent. Those visits have been teaching moments. So, we've well surpassed our goal of forty percent, and we're continuing that through the end of the school year. For culture and climate, we took on the customer service goals of the district in incorporating that.
Ms. Hart, I apologize. Could you talk a little bit about the teaching moments?
Sure. So, when students come into the clinic, it's not just about doing an assessment to find out why they're in the clinic, whether they're there for first aid, or for an illness, or not feeling well, or something emotional going on. While we do do those things, we're also looking at how we can help this student help themselves. So, say, for instance, a student comes in with a playground injury, we're gonna teach them how to take care of themselves once they leave us. We're gonna, you know, clean the injury, or whatever we need to do to help them, but we're also gonna tell them, you know, this is what we recommend that you do later on today. Even for the little ones, you know, if you get a scrape, take your Band-Aid off tonight. When you take a bath, you know, scrub it with soap and water, that kinda thing. Simple things as that, all the way up to the high school, where we see a lot of kids who aren't, you know, eating throughout the day, or not drinking enough fluids. We're gonna discuss those kinds of things with them. We also touch on safety. What could you have done different, you know, when you went down the slide headfirst next time? You know, let's not go down headfirst, you know? Talking a little bit of problem solving, oh. A little bit of problem solving also when they're coming in to see us. We've got a great software program where we chart everything, so we're able to capture all that data so that we can, you know, look and see what we're doing in the clinics. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Excellent, right.
I missed that headfirst lecture.
I can talk to you after the board meeting if we need to. So, back to culture and climate. We set a goal to improve customer service relationships with staff, students, and parents. We sent out some surveys, and we're hoping to get a forty percent favorable customer service rating. And if you look at the next slide, you can see that we did fairly well with that, with parent surveys. This was attached to the parent surveys that were on the website at each campus. So, we got feedback individually for each clinic, but also, you know, for the district as a whole. So, I think we did fairly well with that. At each staff development meeting, we touched on an aspect of customer service, whether it be interactions with students, or faculty, and of course, parents. The next slide is ratings that we got from the departments, and I'm real proud of this. If you look, I included data from twenty sixteen up, and you can see that we had a really nice, significant increase in our ratings from the different departments regarding the different areas, service, communication, cooperation, and active listening. So, I'm real proud of that. We're doing a great job, I think. Our last goal in regards to finance, we have a short-term and a long-term goal. We had several equipment issues in the district, specifically our AEDs, which were out of date, out of service with companies. And with the help of Judy Burns and Mr. Toscano, we're able to find the funds to replace those units. We'll do the same thing next year. We've got certain ones slated to be replaced. And also, we have computer equipment, which that's, I think, an ongoing thing for everybody these days. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say, I am very proud to be a part of a school district that sees that a healthy child is a child that can learn. And I, and thank you for the sharing the teaching moment. I can only imagine what that's like. But many children don't get an opportunity to see someone in the healthcare profession. Many times, you guys are on the front line, and so you can see things, or you can have an opportunity to teach things, or whatever. So, it's very rewarding to, I know, to be able to have that impact on the community. So, I thank you for that.
You're very correct, and thank you. And I need to say thank you to the board. Our district is very rare in that we have an RN located at every school. That is not typical in the United States. There are districts that have one nurse for thousands of children, and so we are fortunate that you have supported that and that we have a nurse at every school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
We're good. Item D, Board Policy Updates in accordance with the District of Innovation Plan.
I believe we may have one more update for Student Services.
Student Services update.
Yes, sir.
Got it, all right.
Director of Student Services, Mr. John Hernandez, will provide the board an update, progress for our Student Services Department. That slideshow begins on page thirty-five in your electronic packet, or is it on behind me? Yes, it is, was. Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and EC Board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to get to serve our students, community, and staff here at East Central ISD. I'll start off with the performance goal that we have. We will identify and support students and families by providing resources and collaborating with outside agencies to meet the diverse needs in our community. We added MOUs from the ECU Medical Center, the Children Bereavement Center, and we did finalize San Antonio Grandparents Raising Grandchildren last week. So, thank you, Mr. Toscano, for getting that signed. EC Cares has been created and implemented, and there's eleven hundred and twenty students identified as of this morning. Handle With Care has been created and implemented with our partnership with San Antonio Police Department, Northeast ISD, and San Antonio ISD, and we now have, eight students have been identified when there's a situation that occurs outside of the school hours at the discretion of the police officer. They will inform our subgroup through the assistance of Mr. Derek Dykstra, our technology. We've created a subgroup within our district, and it's about seven of us on that group, and we'll get it to the principal, the counselor, and the assistant principal before the school day starts. So, that way, they're aware that something occurred overnight to give our opportunity for our students to not compound a situation, suspension, or discipline in those situations. Student Services has provided indirect and direct support to, and these are all the number of students that we identified, two-hundred-and-seventy-one grandparents are raising grandchildren across the district. Single parents in the district is two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five. And thank you to Maria Cantu in our district, who's provided us this data to get this. One-hundred-and-eighty-six McKinney Eventos students, eighty-five that are fostered, ten or ten teen parents. We served seventy families during the holidays. Student assistance, fifty-eight, and utility and rent assistance is now thirteen. Improved communication on our Student Services webpage by updating information. One of the communications in our goal, surveys that came out was that our communication could be improved. In one of those, we added nine tabs to choose from that are up to date on our website. We spent a lot of time throughout the year updating that, so I'll show you some pictures there. That's our website now, if you scroll to that. And that talks about our Student Services. Handle With Care is on there as well, and it's got videos from Handle With Care and the press conference that Mr. Toscano was a part of with the two of the superintendents. And Chief McManus is on there as well, and videos. So, what this done now is that anyone that wants any information on trauma-informed, it's basically funneled to the website. And so, made it very systematic, so it's sensitive schools. It's given a lot of information. A lot of other schools now that are trying across the state and here in San Antonio that are trying to get on board with Handle With Care, they're now going to this. Instead of me having to answer a phone call, they're going to this website across all of the two other districts as well to create it to where they can just follow along. across all of our, the two other districts as well, to create it to where they can just follow along. Because the uniqueness with Handle With Care is that in West Virginia, it was only one, one district, one small. Here, we have thirteen districts in Barre County, so we're all gonna try to do the same thing with Handle With Care. Very unique program that, very fortunate to get outside law enforcement to help us with this. Now we're trying to get Barre County moving forward with that as well. There's our EC Cares website. Again, a lot of our resources, now we have our front and back, basically, that we've created, that we give out to our sta, our principals, our assistant principals, school counselors. They're handing that out to families, communities. Any, at our grandparents raising grandchildren, we pass that out, so it's, it's a resource that are being used. A lot of them are free of charge, or by donation. But the bottom line is that we're eliminating barriers to get the kids to school. That's what we're trying to do, and working relentlessly on getting that done. And so these are all our websites to our school counselors, that they've worked hard also on updating their websites. And so our climate and culture goal is to provide a high level of service, communication, and cooperation, and active listening by provided, by Student Services Department, as evidenced by mid-year survey results, greater than ninety percent. And so we've had an increase in communication from ninety-four point nine. So there, our goal is to improve those on a continuous basis, through cooperation, active listening. Fiscal responsibility, we're on target to return three percent to, or greater, to the fund balance. Our next level of work is to design a system of regularly providing campuses with discipline data, continue to find ways to improve our communication via the Student Services webpage. We're gonna continue to meet monthly with our EC Cares school counselors to increase awareness and deliberate practices to enhance our everyday interactions and assist with transitions from campus to campus. We'll continue to present to all campuses and staff on EC Cares, Handle With Care, to continually be a sensitive district to the needs of all our students and staff. And then we'll continue to seek any MOUs that will benefit our students at East Central ISD. That concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
Again, okay, well, I'm just gonna say it. I, I talk about the EC Cares in my community all the time, and other communities, and I'm excited to see you have a memorandum of understanding about the grandparenting and with the handle with care. I'm just, I'm just excited that we are reaching out and, and, and actually assisting and helping those kids that are, that are vulnerable. And I always refer to the situation with the bus driver, happened a couple of years ago, or last year, or whatever, and then followed through with getting the attention to that, that child that probably would have slipped through the cracks.
Well, it takes all of us, so it's not just Student Services. It's every single one of us in this room. So it's, we're on this thing together. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
All right. Now we're gonna move to Board Policy Updates in accordance with the District of Innovation Plan.
Sir, trustees, as a result of the board's approval of the District of Innovation Plan, there are several local policies that need to be amended to align with those exemptions, if you will. And so those policies with the amendments are there in your electronic packet. There are seven policies that were affected. This month, you'll just read them for the first time. If you have any questions or input, let me know, and we'll work on those throughout the month, and we'll bring them back to you next month for your consideration and possible approval.
All right. So any questions, please direct them to the superintendent. Item E, Construction Update.
All right. So Mr. Selby's gonna provide this month's update for the board. I believe this one's relatively brief. But focused on punch list items, right, Mr. Selby?
I, I get the hint, yes, sir. It'll be brief.
Just read, I'm reading the audience a little bit.
I've already been informed by multiple people that needs to be.
We have pictures, right?
Yes.
All right. Gotta have pictures.
But knowing the importance of this, I will take plenty of time to go through it in a thorough manner. Tradition Elementary School, we continue to work with them on their punch list. We're actually down to one item on the punch list. A little bit of working on that between design, as well as them not doing it properly, but there's a little, we're working through some things. Do have ongoing warranty items, but most of those are being addressed as well. So we're getting very close to getting all that where it needs to be, but still working with them. The Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts, not quite at the same spot. We are working with them on the final punch list. The majority of those items that are on the punch list that haven't been done are, are more significant items involving the HVAC system, which they are, the items are supposed to be in now, and they're gonna be installing those on tomorrow, according to them. And that should be getting much closer to being completed. The other major item is the hardware. And once again, some of those items are a longer lead to get replaced, but they are working on that as well tomorrow. We have some change orders out there hanging that they need to complete. Some of those items are also, for whatever reason, taking a while to get the parts in, but we're staying on top of that, as well as the warranty items. Getting closer to getting that completed. But we do hold a great deal of their money, and if they want to get paid, they have to get it done. Salado, this is Phase Four. Wing B is well underway. Once again, on the left, let me use my pointer for Judy to be able to see. There you go. On the left, you have the exterior being redone on that one end. There was some problem with wood rod and some water penetration there. That's getting resolved. On the interior, they're well underway with the floor polishing. They, they've done initial painting, still doing above-ceiling work. The restrooms are, are having the tile work being done. So we have a great deal of work still underway in Wing B, but that's slated to be completed by the end of May. Wing D, I don't have a picture of it, but it's been completed. We moved into that area. Ms. Triana has been very gracious in working with us so that we can also get, capture the stage area of the cafeteria, so that they can get in there early and be working on that as well. At Harmony, Phase Four is complete, and as you can see through the photographs, it looks very nice. But once again, we have the campus administration working very cooperatively with us, and the contractor. What you see on the, of course, the left is a finished classroom, but on the right, we're using one of the classrooms for temporary library. We're moving that out of the library early, so that they can get in there and get a head start on that, that work being done. We will get the, and this is the Phase Five, the final phase. What you see on the left is the restroom renovations taking place. You can see that, well, you can't, you may or may not be able to see, they've already done the concrete trenching and, and done the utility work under, under the floor, and already patched that in. They're getting the, the framing up, and both there and on the right, you have the area that's between the library and those restrooms, which is, has been used for some classrooms, but also level library, and that's being renovated as well. In getting the library early, the restrooms and library early, they're able to get a jump on that work as well. They do have an awful lot of work being done over the summer in the administration area to be completely taken out and redone, computer lab, library, and so forth. But all that will be done before schools get started. Pecan Valley, once again, Phase Four is complete. They've already moved in, as you can see on the left and the right. Very attractive classrooms, talking to the teachers. They love the facilities that have been renovated. Phase Five is that southeast wing of the, of the school. Right now, you don't see a whole lot, other than that they are doing abatement in there, because there was some asbestos still in the walls and so forth. Already have that southeast classrooms turned over. That's a big jump on the Phase Five for the summer. We'll be getting the library turned over to us in May. Once again, the principal's been excellent in working with us on that. And then big work taking place in the summer on the library, those classrooms, and then the cafeteria itself. Sinclair, Phase Four is almost complete. What you can see on the left is a classroom that is near completion. Still have some millwork to do, and some baseboard that needs to be put in. Finishing up, doing some, some work over here on some polishing. But they're very close to being completed by next week. They'll have the inspection done with the city, and should be getting that turned over to us. With that taking place, once again, they're working with us to get the library turned over to us early, so that they can get a jump on that, and two classrooms in the front. And then once that, once school is out, they'll start hitting the administration area, which will also be, have a major renovation to it as well. Just wanna say, before we go on, I can't say enough about how well the, the administration, the school staff, teachers, everybody have worked well with the contractor. I want to just thank them again for all the work they've done. It's a great inconvenience, and it could have been much more, they could be very negative about all this, but they've been extremely positive in working with us. And that's why this is taking place and moving forward as well as it has. So I want to thank them for that. John Glenn High School Annex, well underway. The shop area, the exterior is completed for the most part. You have, we have some landscaping that still needs to be done, grass put in there and so forth. But I wanted to give you a shot of the entryway coming from the high school, and then on the backside, you know, the beautiful snow, little air vent there that's coming out of there. The actual.
Is that the welder exhaust?
Yes, it is. So the, the overhead doors are actually complete. They just have those covered so that some bonehead doesn't run into them, hopefully, and mess them up too bad. The John Glenn High School Annex Academic Building, the restrooms are done, the water fountains are done. Wanted to show you something that was done there, and, and so that's well underway. The band, actually, a lot has been done. The new parking lot, band practice area is complete. They've got that turned over to them this week. Restrooms, water fountains, painting is complete, with the exception of some final coats of paint in the, the new shop area. Once again, the expectation is for that to be delivered to us in May, and we're looking forward to that getting done. East Central Development Center, we, as I reported last time, we're gonna do whatever work we're gonna do there through in-house efforts, and we're looking at getting that done over the summer. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Selby?
Thank you.
Looks like we're good, Jim. Thank you. And item F, Upcoming Events.
In your miscellaneous package, trustees, calendar for April and May. You'll definitely want to pay attention to May. This is banquet season, and there's several events, concerts, banquets, achievement awards, you name it, in the month of May. So in May, just to point out a couple of those. The Superintendent's Student of the Month reception is at Heritage Middle School on the eighth, from six to seven. So it was an exciting event for any of you that would like to take in a senior prom, if it's been a while. There'll be one on the eleventh, Saturday, in Florisville. The high school administration is always welcoming some additional eyes.
We got extra radios.
Extra radios. You got a sign-up sheet for duty and supervision? Okay. We'll, we'll take care of that, Mr. McCann. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the sixth, but note that it will be at the Patterson. There's a, I'm sorry, the sixteenth. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. The reception begins at five-thirty. This is our annual service awards we normally do in the cafeteria. For the first time, we're gonna give it a go in the Patterson. And I believe the reception will be in the SBC foyer, as we're trying our best to keep food and drinks out of the Patterson. And in the events that we've had there, that seems to work pretty good as an arrangement with there's, when there's refreshments right across the walk there, so. That is on the sixteenth. Academic Achievement Awards at the high school, kind of a precursor to graduation, a really big event there. On the twentieth, at six-thirty, that is also at the Patterson. Memorial Day holiday on the twenty-seventh, and again, most of the month of May is filled with spring shows and awards, banquets, and concerts. So it'd be awesome if, if your schedule allows for you to make some of those events. The staff would be excited to see you. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? All right. Moving on to Item Six, Our Action Agenda. Item A, Donation from Toyota.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, per Board policy, CDC Local, the Board can accept a gift of money or property on behalf of the district if it's valued at five thousand dollars or greater. Must be approved by the Board. Gift should be given to the district and not a particular school. However, the Board could, at the discretion of the superintendent, identify the gift to be used in a particular school or program, such as athletics, band, and the like. In this particular case, we're recommending the Board consider accepting the donation from Toyota, and that we would use that in the new machine shop at the John Glenn Annex. This would be a robot arm. Its depreciated value is about seventeen thousand dollars. These are, these are pretty expensive robots. And it's functional. It's, it's something the students would be able to troubleshoot and learn about robotics and programming, et cetera. There's the ability to extend, or add some modules to this, so the kids could actually program it to do tasks in the future. It's a massive piece of equipment. We'll install it in there, should the Board approve this. And it has a, a wall or a barrier, safety barrier around it, I believe, a ten-by-ten footprint. So it's a, it's a pretty massive piece of equipment. So we'd be very fortunate to have, have this piece of equipment. And these, these types of equipment are used in real time at Toyota now, so they're definitely at the industry standard, and would give our kids a really, really neat, relevant experience in that way, so. Happy to answer any more questions? We have Mr. Morgan here, certainly could offer more details if the Board needs it. But I've reached my capacity of expertise with regard to that piece of equipment.
So do we can, is this just gonna be a part of the regular shop program, or is this going to be part of a robotics program? What's the, what's the intention?
Yes, our thing, our, we're, we're expanding career in technology programs. We're looking at advanced manufacturing pathways, and really looking at the, the, the types of courses that we can offer, given we have the new facility. So this, this particular robot definitely aligns with that advanced, advanced manufacturing robotics kind of pathway. And so for that reason, we feel like it's a good fit in that location. And we have, it gives us more opportunities to think about what we might offer and what we might do with it.
But right now, more towards the manufacturing than actual formal robotics type?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Great. Any other questions? All right.
Mr. President, I recommend Board approval of the donated manufacturing robot at a depreciated value of seventeen thousand dollars from Toyo Tetsu, Texas.
A recommendation from the superintendent to accept donation from Toyota, Texas, for our program. Cheryl, entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Have a second by Mr. Moki. Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? Not? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Termination of Probationary Contract Employees.
Mr. President, trustees, I recommend the termination of the probationary contract of Kimberly Parker, effective at the end of the school year. Furthermore, move that the Board direct the superintendent to deliver written notice to said employee of the Board's decision.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to terminate the probationary contract of Kimberly Parker, and direct him to deliver written notice to her. Cheryl, entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Con- Item C, construction project delivery contract award method for construction of Heritage Middle School Foundation slash structural project.
Trustees, as you're aware, we've been evaluating the condition of some foundation shifting in an area of the Heritage Campus, particularly in the storage rooms, the gymnasiums, but also in the east, east wing of the campus facing the field. And you'll recall that when we replaced that field, we, we, we learned about the clay, did a lot of expanding and contracting and, and shifting and buckling of the field. We believe that after twenty-plus years there at Heritage, a similar condition exists in that area or a region of that campus's footprint. And so, we've engaged architects, engineers to do some core sampling, topographic surveys, to really get down to the brass tacks, basically, of what the condition is there, therefore, what is the appropriate solution. We've had some recommendations in the past of how to solve it, but we wanna make sure we, we, we have a permanent solution recommended by those experts. And so, that evaluation has concluded. It looks like we've got some proposals possibly as a path forward. It includes possible foam injection under the slab as one possibility. There's some plumbing repairs. We've got, as a, as a result of the shifting, we've got some storm drainage underneath that is deteriorating that needs some repair. We've got some masonry cracks, and then, at the end of the, of the scope, once repaired, we'll need to, to finish the flooring, refinish the flooring, reattach some walls, et cetera. And so, it's a, it's a pretty decent scope, but we think we're, we'll be able to have a long-term solution. And with the board's approval tonight, we'd be asking to take this project to the market, given that we think it'll be over fifty thousand dollars, and ask the board to consider a con- construction project delivery contract award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals with a timeline being finished at the end of July, so that when we open in the fall, these, these corrections would have been made over at Heritage. So, be happy to answer any additional questions the board might have about that.
Questions about Heritage? No? All right.
So, trustees, I recommend board approval of the construction project delivery contract award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals and securing a contract for the Heritage Middle School Foundation structural project as presented.
Have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept construction deli- project delivery contract award method at Heritage. Chair'll entertain a motion? Have a motion by Ms. Brazil, is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Massengill. Any other questions, comments? Not, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Item D, budget amendment number eighteen dash nineteen dash zero two, local maintenance.
Trustees, in your electronic, I mean, I'm sorry, in your miscellaneous packet, you have a handout. It's titled pre-K through fifth library transition needs. Given that we're transitioning our instructional arrangement in all of our elementary schools to now include pre-K to five, we use this as an opportunity to audit the stacks of books in our libraries, knowing that we were gonna have to add some fourth and fifth grade collections to all of those campuses, as well as some pre-K collections. The report of, of that audit is there in the handout, and on the last page of that handout, you'll see TEA's recommendations for collection size for print and digital resources. These are recommendations, not mandates, but you can see that, you know, the, the standard is about fourteen books per kid. But to really take it to a distinguished level, you'd be shooting for about eighteen books for, per kid. When you look at the first page, the table there, you'll see that when it, when, when we're talking about pre-K to third grade, you know, at Harmony, we're twenty-one to one, twenty-one books per one, per, per kid. Highland Forest, twenty-six to one, Pecan Valley, nineteen to one, Sinclair, sixteen to one. So, with regard to pre-K to third, we're, we're at the distinguished stan- we've, we've met that standard. But when it comes to fourth and fifth grade, we had a lot of aged books, and so, we're looking at purging many of those, and we're looking at a, at, at a plan over the next few years to get fourth and fifth grade resources in the library up to the same standard as pre-K to third. So, we're shooting it starting at five to one, five books per, per kid at every campus, and you'll see it's about twenty thousand dollars a campus. Then, at Solado, same thing, given that we're adding the opposite there. We're adding pre-K to three at Solado, they already, they're already four, five. So, we're, we're looking at adding twelve hundred and fifty books there at a cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars. At the bottom of that first page, some notes there, we have invested quite a bit in our Spanish collection, and Solado and Oak Crest will get about five thousand books, additional books in Spanish, which gives us about eleven books to each student at both Oak Crest and Solado, which is, you know, is, is really good. And so, all in all, this investment this year is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that'll get us at least where we need to be. But we plan over the next two or three years to, to, to invest in, in bringing all of our libraries up, hopefully, to the distinguished standard per TEA's recommendations. Be happy to, oh, and one other point is that at a couple of campuses, Solado in particular, will need to add some shelving and, and limited amount of furniture, but definitely shelving because we'll be adding a significant number of, of books to that library. And all of that is included in the, in the, are accounted for in the amendment we're bringing to you tonight.
Any questions?
All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of budget amendment number eighteen nineteen oh two, local maintenance as presented.
Have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve budget amendment for library features as presented. Chair'll entertain a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Mulkey, is there a second? Have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? Not, chair'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Have a motion by Mr. Massengill, is there a second? Have a second by Mr. Mulkey, the consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Item eight, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with the board's attorney concerning legal and procedural issues involving non-renewal of term contract employees. The board ended its closed meeting at seven forty-one PM on April the eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. No action was taken in the closed meeting. Our next agenda item is consider and take action regarding the non-renewal of term contract of Natasha K. Rosas, Leslie Lizalde, and Patricia F. Heflin.
Trustees, having been previously notified of being proposed for non-renewal on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and having failed to submit a request for a hearing within fifteen days of receipt of the notice, and after reviewing the most recent evaluation of each employee, I recommend the non-renew, renewal of the term contract of Natasha K. Rosas, Leslie Lizalde, and Patricia F. Heflin effective at the end of this school year due to the effects of a previously called-for program change as outlined in their notice letters. I further recommend authorized superintendent to deliver notice of the board's action to non-renew the term contracts of Natasha K. Rosas, Leslie Lizalde, and Patricia F. Heflin.
All right, have a recommendation from the superintendent. Chair'll entertain a motion? Have a motion to accept the superintendent's direction, recommendation toward the non-renewal of the term contract of Natasha K. Rosas, Leslie Lizalde, and Patricia Heflin, and direct the superintendent to notify them in writing. Second? We have a second by Ms. Brazil. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have item ten, adjournment. Chair'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Mulkey, we have a second by Mr. Massengill, we are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you very much.